The Committee on Environment, Land Agriculture and Procurement Reform calls this oversight hearing to order. It is 9:00 AM on Thursday, August 10th, 2017. Present with me today, with us, as the, my left is the Vice Speaker Theresa Lahey, on my right is Speaker BJ Cruz, and to his right is Senator Will Castro. Thank you very much for joining us. I wouldn't be surprised if although the other senators may not be physically present here, they're probably in their office watching the hearing from, on the television. The purpose of this oversight hearing is to discuss the, basically where we are at with Public Law 31-43, which was enacted in May of 19...oh, 2011. And that particular law was enacted to establish the Guam Invasive Species Council. It authorized also the establishment of the Guam Invasive Species Inspection Fee and Fund, and authorizes the Department of Agriculture to establish a Biosecurity Division. It has been six years since the enactment of this law, and this, this public hearing will then give the committee an opportunity to receive updates on the progress that has been accomplished following the enactment of 3143, six years ago. The, we will be looking, now, I would like to start off this hearing by basically really actually affirming, do we have, do we still have that invasive species threat? We hear about it once in a while in, on the news media, you don't really, there's not much discussion about it in the community, but we certainly see evidence out there with headless coconut trees and no birds, and occasionally reports about people going to the hospital to be treated for bites from the little fire ants and the great banded hornet. But that's just basically what I bring in from what I, what I read in the paper or hear. And so, we're gonna start off by, by actually having, getting an affirmation if the invasive species still pose a significant problem on our island. And, and after we have started with that initial discussion, I am going to, I would like to then go in to take the discussion in the direction of clarifying where we are at with respect to the development of the Invasive Species Management Plan, the status of the program funding with respect to funds that have been received and expenditures to date from both local and federal sources, establishment, the status of the establishment of the Department of Agriculture Biosecurity Division, and then solutions that are currently under active discussion. The notice of this oversight hearing was provided to, of course, senators, stakeholders, and the local media, as well as having been published in the Guam Daily Post on August 3rd, 2017, and August 8th, 2017, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. And so, we're gonna go ahead and start our oversight hearing. And of course, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Mr. Roland Kiduwa, and Mr. Sablon, Director of Agriculture, who's also the chairman for the Invasive Species Council. So maybe if you step forward, and Dr. Moore?
Campbell.
Campbell, yeah. And, and... And I guess we can bring up the rest of the council members either now or whatever, but I, I want to establish first the opening part of this hearing with the affirmation of the extent of the problem. So, we can go ahead and, Mr. Chairman, do you want to start off? Do you want Mr. Kiduwa to...well, whenever we talk about rhino beetles, it seems like it's always Roland, so, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Matthew Sablon, Director of the Guam Department of Agriculture, and I appreciate you inviting us this morning in addressing these devastation of the invasive species. I just want to introduce my staff for any administrative concerns or questions that you might one address. I want to introduce Dr. Russell Campbell from the Biosecurity Division. He oversees the division. And if, if I can have Tony up here, Tony Santos? Ms. Tony Santos is my administrative services officer, and she oversees the overall, the budget for the department. And, so, yes, yes, again, good morning, Senator Castro, Speaker Cruz, and Vice Speaker Lahey. Yes, on your introduction, Mr. Chair, it is devastating. The invasive species stems back way back. In fact, 2017 marks the 10th anniversary for the rhino beetle, introduction of the rhino beetle. And as you mentioned, the little fire ants, it's a public health issue. We are devastated by the enormous infestation of the rhino beetle, are devastating our tree of life, which actually is symbolic in our flag. And, you know, again, I thank you for actually, for actually inviting us here so we can actually discuss issues, how we can manage. And I would like to just open the floor to, to whatever questions you want, I want us to answer.
Maybe before we do that, Roland, do you wanna...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Speaker, Vice Speaker, and Senators Castro and Espaldon. The question that you first asked was, do invasive species still pose a problem to Guam? And without any hesitation, the answer is yes. We have seen a number of environmental, cultural, human and econo, and economic impacts to our island. And these impacts are felt every day. I, I think a lot of us take us, take that for granted. We have a, these invasive species are impacting both our flora and our fauna. The BTS, the brown tree snake, is a perfect example of something that has impaired and, and has changed our ecosystem. Like you, like you mentioned earlier, the loss of the birds. Well, there are some, there are some cascading effects to that. Some of the reasons why we believe that the coconut rhinoceros beetle control tactics and tools that were originally proposed to us when we first found this invasive species are not working is because of the impact of the brown tree snake. So, I think it's important for us to get together, and I, and I thank you for this timely hearing for this. I can also say that we are probably receiving or finding approximately two new invasive species a month. And this is with us not looking for it. These are just things that are coming up to the university or being intercepted by Customs and Quarantine, or by the Department of Agriculture. If we really took and made a concerted effort to stand up and, and, and go out and do delineating surveys, we would definitely find a lot more invasive pests. I will say that on the question on whether the battle is being won, I'm confident in saying that we are winning a bunch of small battles. The war has not been won, but we are winning small battles. And with that, I can tell you that while rhino beetle around the island is viewed as devastating, I just drove around the island this weekend, and if you go down south, I see beautiful, beautiful coconut trees in the southern part of the island. I see beautiful coconut trees in the central part of the island. But more importantly, I see the trees recovering in Tumon, if you drive through Tumon. And it's, and the reason why I attribute that is because of the fact that the residents, the businesses in Tumon have, have taken a landscape approach, and they have managed the coconut trees for the most part in Tumon. And because it's being managed at a landscape scale, you're actually seeing the trees recover. And yes, you will still see rhino beetle in there, but because of the large concerted effort, that tells you that the tools are available, but it has to be managed at a landscape scale. And that's why I honestly believe that when you take a look at the effort and the, the spirit of the public law that, that created the Guam Invasive Species Council and the Biosecurity Division, they were very well intended. I think that we can revisit that. I think we should revisit that to find ways in which we can improve upon it. But the bare bones are there, and they work. And I think it's something that, once again, we can, we can build upon. I would also like to say that part of the reason why we are winning the battles against this invasive species is because of a number of different things that are currently happening. Regional collaboration for the past 10 years has been very steady. We now have a regional invasive species council in which Guam is very active in. We have a regional biosecurity plan which includes Hawaii. And actually, we are now coordinating not only on Guam, but throughout the region for us to update that and to make sure that it is on point and as, as, what's the term, target driven as we can get so that we can start hitting these targets. So we are coordinating a regional effort based on this. I can also tell you that not only is there a regional invasive species council that's, that's meeting a couple of times a year and communicating, we're, we're working closer with DOD than we ever have. We're working closer with USDA than we ever have. And, you know, we, we get calls and we communicate back and forth with the state of Hawaii since they are, since they do have a stake in the Pacific area. The, you also alluded to the status of the Guam Invasive Species Management Plan. And I can tell you that while the public law did say that we needed to have one, a interim invasive species management plan was developed, and I'll let the Department of Agriculture answer more on that. But we are currently at a point where we are going to be updating that and integrating it with the regional invasive species management plan. There are also efforts that are coming out of the Department of Interior under the, and with them, we will be coordinating our invasive species efforts with other territories. So that's being another effort that's coming out of DC that we're working really close with. I can honestly say that we are in a better situation today when it comes to invasive species, but the reason is because of the people that are involved in it. And it's because we are, it's the continued efforts. And I see people working more closely on invasive species. And I, I will echo your sentiments, Mr. Chair, that we do need to do a better job with regards to educating the public. We need a more visible, and we need a more consistent public education campaign. And that is something that I'm hoping that the Guam Invasive Species Council will head and put as part of the program. I would also like to say that it would, my, I would like to suggest that if Public Law 3143 were fully implemented with some modifications, because we have some lessons learned, I think that we can strengthen our battle against invasive species to the point that it'll benefit the island and all its residents. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Thank, thank you very much for that update. And, and of course, what we hope to get out of this hearing is recognizing that, for example, although Public Law 31-43 did establish a funding source, which was projected to generate about $2 million a year, we are falling way short of that. And so hopefully, from this hearing, we'll kind of have an idea of, so, you know, what are those obstacles that have kept us from generating the kinds of revenues that was being projected? We, that Public Law also authorized the establishment of the Biosecurity Division. And to date, I understand, I think it was, we've gotten what, one, we've hired one individual, one or two, out of what was projected, I believe, to be at least a dozen personnel. And we've got to find out, we, hopefully, we can get a better understanding at this hearing as to what are those obstacles that's keeping us from, from filling those positions. And, and then, of course, I know that we have an interim management plan, and I, I just want to get a, hopefully, the committee can get a better understanding of, you know, six years later, we're still at a, why do we call it an interim as opposed to the, the, the invasive species management plan, as was initially envisioned? So with that, let's go ahead and first discuss about the invasive species management plan.
Yes, Mrs. Chair, I'm gonna defer that to Dr. Russell Campbell. He's the chairperson at, he's the secretary, and of course, myself and Director Jim McDonald were co-chairs for the Guam Invasive Species Council. So, Dr. Campbell can address the response to your question.
Okay. Now, before we go further, I just want to inform the panel members, and I want to also welcome Senator Espaldon, the vice chair for this committee. I, I, we had sent out the digital copy of the master plan, the interim management plan, to everyone, to all the senators. I, I had a chance to read through it. I think there was a lot of very good information. If nothing else, the first part of it certainly educated me a lot with respect to this invasive species issue. There was a lot of material regarding the brown tree snake, but probably most surprising in that plan was the information, I think there must have been about probably five pages listing in single space, all the invasive species that have entered this island. And, and it's, it's, it's kind of scary, which, you know, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all, Speaker, Vice Speaker, Senator Espaldon, and Senator Castro. Yes, the listing, the actual listing of species is one that I compiled myself. I'd been working on that for some time. So it was put in there as an appendix, and actually, I did hope that it would be a bit shocking to people. There were, I think, well over 400 species on that list. And I included everything that I could get my hands on that was documented as having been, been collected here and been identified, so that I could give it an actual, both scientific name and a, and a common name, as we call them. Many of those species probably do not cause much damage or not even noticeable, but there are probably 20 or 30, 40 of them that are very serious. So that just shows the magnitude of the problem of invasive species. We have some that can be extremely damaging, and then we have some that will be virtually unnoticedable. I would go back and say, as you mentioned, there was also a very large appendix on the brown tree snake. The brown tree snake, that appendix came from the working group on brown tree snake, which has benefited from a number of years of cooperation and work, and a considerable amount of funding from the federal government. So they have a very, very mature program in working on the brown tree snake. So that, that appendix was, I think, almost 80 pages, or a little over 80 pages. Now, I would go back and point out, the interim plan has been put together with funding from the Department of the Interior recently, just in the last year. So, I certainly can't take credit for, for that. But I did help the contractor last fall, put together, have interviews with him, have meetings with a number of people, including Roland Kiduwa over here, other people at the University of Guam, federal officials here on island, and so on, so that he could get a grasp of all the various people that work on invasive species on Guam. When the council was first formed, I was appointed as its first acting executive secretary. And many of the early meetings of the council were involved in trying to educate the council members. As you probably know, the council members consist of various cabinet-level departments, as well as a number of other stakeholders, including federal government agency stakeholders and community stakeholders. So, in, this was, of course, in 2011. And one of the first, in fact, I think at the very first meeting, one of the things I pointed out in my PowerPoint was the importance of starting to try and put together a management plan. And I provided at that meeting a listing of about eight or 10 other management plans, both the National Invasive Species Council's management plan, as well as the various states such as California, Pennsylvania, Florida, and so on. So, many of these states in the, in the US have also created invasive species management plans. And they can be extremely extensive and expensive to put together. And they can oftentimes involve 50 to 100 individuals of various backgrounds and levels of, or types of expertise in various species. Invasive species can range all the way from viruses to... Invasive species can range all the way from viruses to large animals such as deer and pigs and so on. So you have a wide-ranging need for biological and ecological expertise when you're going to put together an invasive species management plan. So one of the things I tried to do in some of these meetings was get across this need, get across the need to bring together and communication and the expertise of various scientific disciplines, and perhaps get funding and form a committee to start working on the plan. This never really gelled. So we tried to get things going, and then finally, we did get this funding recently from the Department of the Interior and hired one young man to actually work with those of us that were available and put together this interim plan. So that's how it came to be.
Okay. Now, I noticed that in the plan, first of all, I was curious, why was it titled the interim invasive species management plan? I'm just curious as to why it's titled as an interim plan. And secondly, I noticed that the appendices that were put to it really were focused on the pigs, the feral pigs, the rhinos, the greater banded hornet, the fire ants, and the cycad.
Right.
Yeah. So are those basically the targets for -- that are -- where the efforts is being focused on primarily?
Yeah, we asked--
And the brown tree snake.
Yes, and the brown tree snake, of course. We asked our experts here on island to come up with a list of five or six of what they consider to be the most serious things threatening us right now, or that have threatened us in the last few years. And that list that you just named is that list. So the brown tree snake, of course, has been the poster child worldwide over the last 20 years or so of an invasive species, and it still causes problems on Guam. The little fire ant right now is, in my opinion, the most serious threat that we face. It will be slowly invading our neighborhoods and attacking our children and our grandchildren and putting people in the hospital. The greater banded hornet, as you know, is a big frightening, serious pest that also is invading neighborhoods right now and putting people in the hospital. And then the cycad scale, I believe you mentioned, it actually has wiped out over 90% of the major forest tree in the northern part of the limestone forests of Guam. So it's actually taken a species on Guam that's native to Guam, that was one of the most common plants on island, and turned it into an endangered species. And it's done that in the last 10, 15 years.
And that was the fadang tree, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, we've -- and if any of the panel members want to ask questions while we're still on the management plan itself, but I guess the plan is to guide the council in the work that it's tasked to do. I noticed that, I guess, the council has had a meeting last, I think, once in 2017 since January, correct?
Yes, the -- it's usually on a quarterly basis, Mr. Chair, and our next one is coming up in October.
Right.
Yeah, so it's on a quarterly basis. And just back to the plan itself, it's, of course, may title interim because it's a work in progress. And of course, when we submit to you and the administration for review and advise, recommendation, so it's a -- it will change upon recommendation.
Well, I believe the law requires that the plan be updated every two years.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm just a little concerned about the fact that the, at least based on the number of -- I was only able to get a copy, two, the copy of two minutes of meetings that were conducted once this year and I think once last year. So, you know, it kind of begs the question of the activeness of the council in coming together to meet, to discuss the problems that we have. So is it accurate to say that the council, at least in that six-year period since the council was established, that it has only met twice, or at least as evidenced by copies of minutes that were available?
No, Chair, I have -- I wasn't asked, so I didn't give anybody any minutes, but I have, there's been 19 meetings--
Okay.
-- since the inception of the council, and there's been two meetings this year.
Okay.
There's going to be another one, I think, in late September or October, as the director said.
Do you maintain minutes of those meetings?
I do have the minutes of all of those meetings. I even have recordings of the proceedings.
And I would use those minutes not so much to say, yep, they've met that day, but really to kind of, although I -- my off, the committee will be sending a representative to these meetings, but I want to be able to go through those minutes and mine it to see, well, you know, where are the problems that maybe this committee might be able to assist with? So that's why those minutes are important to me.
Sure.
I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for things to ding on.
They're important to me also, because I'm the guy that was the secretary, and I had to sit down and type them up. So I do have them, yes. I even, I brought a listing here. It's not complete, but it does cover the first 15 meetings--
Okay.
-- and with a small synopsis of what took place during the meetings.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to provide that to you today, if you wish. And then there was one or two meetings I may have missed. I was retired for about a year, but Mr. Kitegwa was the acting secretary at the time.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure he has minutes if I can't find them.
Okay.
I think I can find them all.
So before we move on to the other discussion topics, and we close out on the management plan, does anybody have any, Senator, Vice Speaker?
Yes, thank you. How do you foresee the updated management plan to change what you're currently operating under?
Well, I think, as you, as been mentioned, it's an interim plan, and it really needs to be fleshed out a lot more than it is with details about cooperation between groups and individuals and government agencies, and who's going to do what, and who's going to be responsible for what, and who's going to have jurisdiction over what, and things like that. And these are tough things to get accomplished, but I think that if you really sit down and look at some of these other state management plans that I've mentioned, they can become very extensive, hundreds of pages long, and very intricate insofar as how they've determined that their governments will try to respond to these invasive species problems. And I think that's where it should go, probably.
Are you guiding the priority areas, I guess, as to what they should expand upon in this plan?
Well, as an acting secretary, I can't tell the council what to do, but I can encourage them to perhaps form a committee, now that we have this interim plan, to actually sit down and start laying out the way forward on it. How do we move forward to the next one that's going to be due in a year and a half or so?
So you expect from that plan concrete changes in behavior of agencies?
I would hope so.
All right. And what about the regional plan? How does, is that helpful in--
Yes.
Versus the interim plan?
I was involved in the development of the regional biosecurity plan for Micronesia and Hawaii, and a lot of people were involved in that. There are literally thousands and thousands of pages in the whole thing, if you look at it. And but each jurisdiction has a listing, a very large listing of, in a table, of dozens, if not hundreds, of items, and they're prioritized, and they say what we should be doing. And of course, the problem with many of these things like that is we simply don't have the people or the money to get the people to do everything at once. So it really becomes a mechanism where you have to try and prioritize things and then get the ball rolling and keep it rolling. And so I look upon the RBP as a guide to help us with the local plan. And there's a lot of things in there, specifically already written down for Guam, what Guam needs to do, and what the priority of those things should be. So I think it would serve us to just basically use what we've already worked on and prepared and have the council go over it again. And since the council consists of the various government agencies and the other stakeholders and federal agencies, if we could get everybody at the table to agree how to work together, then we could get things, we could get the ball rolling and keep it rolling.
How long do you foresee, how long will it take to complete that, the new plan, the updated plan, the permanent plan?
Well, I think it's, you know, it's an ongoing process, and it's supposed to be redone every two years, which makes it a difficult one. We're trying to get an invasive species coordinator position created and hired. That person is supposed to serve as the secretary for the council and also be in charge of keeping this management plan up to date. So if we could get that person onboard, and if it's the type of high-quality person that I hope it is, then they would be able to work on this base, almost on a day-to-day basis, and keep working with the other individuals on the council that represent the various agencies and stakeholders.
We do know that the interim plan is for 2017 to 2019, so by 2020, we should be seeing a new one.
Yes.
Just ask one more question. So if it's inter-agency cooperation that you think is the most immediately needed, or coordination, not cooperation, I'm assuming everybody's cooperating, but the coordination or better spelling out of the duties, are you able to adopt that, is the council able to adopt that, like, at its next meeting, at least, you know, parts, so that those parts will then be put into your permanent plan, but we don't have to wait until 2020 to get increased cooperation?
Yes, I think so. I think it would be something that would be, should be high on the agenda of the chairs.
Thank you.
I just want, I noticed that, of course, by law, the voting members of the invasive species council is Department of Agriculture, Customs and Quarantine, and I guess you two gentlemen are the co-chairs. University of Guam represented here. Department of Parks and Recs, are they represented here today? Northern and southern, I noticed the northern and southern, well, the northern Soil and Water Conservation District is represented. Even some of the federal partners are here. Representative from DOD, USDA is here. I find it interesting, though, that unless, I didn't recognize, but we don't have representatives here from the airport and the port of Guam, the ports of entry. I want to take note of that, okay?
They are members of the council.
They are voting members.
Yes, yes. And they have normally attended the council meetings in the past.
Okay. All right. So I just thought that was, that had to be noted, because it's through those ports of entry that many of our invasive species, I presume, come through.
I note that you've had some funds for the hiring of personnel. What seems to be the holdup?
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to defer that to Ms. Toni Santos, our Minister of Service Office, to answer your question.
So may I maybe interject here? And of course, the hiring of the personnel is dependent on two things. One, of course, DOA is going to need to establish those positions, right? And I do know that the Department of Agriculture has already sent a request to DOA to establish those positions. But it's also important on having the funding to pay for those. So, Mr. Speaker, if you would, maybe we should talk about the funding, because the projection, when the inspection fee was established, was that we were going to be basically generating about $2 million a year. And we're not collecting anywhere near that. So I think if we can discuss that, where is that obstacle? And then, let's go in and discuss the personnel. Why, or I guess--
No, no, that's fine, because I received word that there's been almost $1 million collected.
Actually, maybe Mrs. Santos can--
Well, we're talking about the invasive species bond fee. Well, when it was first, well, in 2015, we only received $9,000. And in 2016, we only received overall $519,000. But when we first started to hire anyone, of course, funding was the problem. So in order for us to hire anyone, we had to go through the legislature, and they, because at that point in time, we don't have invasive species coordinator. So in lieu of that, in interim, they allowed us to hire a PC4, because that's already an established position. But even at that, we still didn't have enough funding, but pursuant to the law, we were authorized then to go ahead and do the PC4. And in the meantime, we can start working on creating the position, which is the invasive species coordinator. And currently, we're still working on that also to establish, so--
Since when? I mean, I think it's important that everybody understand dates.
Well, that didn't happen in 2015. It only happened in 2017, when, in '16, when we started the ball rolling to hire someone. But that, again, the problem--
Has that person been hired?
Well, currently, we do. And that's a PC4, which is Ms. Bautan.
Okay, so you have one PC4. And where are we with establishing the specifications for the, or the job description for your--
On the invasive species coordinator? Documents have been forwarded to DOA, and currently, they're working into it. And that communication is between DOA and Dr. Campbell.
When was that sent to DOA for?
Two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I think that was sent like three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago?
Well, it was initially sent in by, I believe it was Patrick Arterell, commodity inspector three. I didn't know what happened after that, but then when Dr. Campbell came, returned to work from retirement, he picked it up again, and that's when he started, got the ball rolling to have it established or created.
But you've had the authority to spend the money to get somebody. And I'm trying to determine how long has there been communication between your department and Department of Administration to write the job description?
Well, that's where--
I mean, if we're going to be addressing this issue, three weeks ago, the notice for this meeting, hearing came out three weeks ago, just about.
Well, I can tell you that I wrote the job specs for this thing last year in June and sent it to Patrick Arterell.
Sent it to where?
To Patrick Arterell, who was the acting chief of the division at the time of my retirement, yes. And I had already put that together the middle of 2016.
And was that, Matt, was that transmitted to Department of Administration? And where are we with that?
At this, currently, at this time, we are working in collaboration with them to develop the language for the position description. It's, you know, it's a creation of the job description and position description. And I realize it's taking long, but we are working in partnership with the Department of Administration.
If I could add just a little bit, I think I know part of the problem with the, this is a, they're creating a new position which is rather unique in the government of Guam's classified service. And it's taken them some time to figure out exactly how to put this together, I think. Because actually, the invasive species coordinator would serve the council as its executive secretary, and so they have to basically couch the words in such a way, they've looked at the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, for example, at their coordinator, and perhaps at some others. So they've had to come up with an entirely new concept for a classified person. Also, this-- new concept for a classified person. Also, this person serves the council, but it works for the division, the biosecurity division in the Department of Agriculture. So it has to fit into our, our hierarchy in our division while at the same time serving the council and basically also serving on the regional invasive species council to interact with other governments. So it's not, when you hear the term secretary, it's more like a secretary of agriculture or a secretary of the interior than it is a secretary in, in an office somewhere. So we've had to work with them to, to try and come up with the job specifications on this for, for quite a while. And I think that was part of the delay.
My concern is, is that if, an earlier statement that I heard that there's two invasive species that you find per week?
Month, I think he said.
Per month? I mean, we've gone through almost...
I can assure you, I would have liked to have seen it established in 2011 because I've had to fill in as executive secretary for the council since the initiation of the council. And I would have liked to see that. And it's true, I can't answer for why it's taken exactly so long. But I do know that we've tried to get the specifications to human resources. We've tried to get across that it's a new type of position and how's it going to interact? How's it going to work for the council, serving to coordinate the council's activities amongst, not only within the government of Guam, but with other governments, and still work for the Department of Agriculture, basically.
Has there been any other staff hired in the biosecurity division, Mr. Spahn?
Excuse me?
The funds were also supposed to be used to hire individuals for the biosecurity division. Has, has there been anybody else besides Dr. Campbell?
Yes, as, as we mentioned, we did pick up the program coordinator four, which is Ms. Babauta, Carmen Babauta, and...
Commodity inspector one.
And the commodity inspector one.
And what does the commodity inspector one do?
He's the, he's like the guy that goes out, does the inspection, the traps, the testings, yeah. So he's, he's onboard. So we have two, how many additional?
We have, well, currently, we have the commo, I mean, the PC4, the commodity inspector one, and then there's three currently that they're preparing packets now for interviews from DOA. And that will be the agricultures three, agriculture specialist, specialist one, and the administrative assistant.
And what seems to be the holdup with that?
We're just waiting for the interview packet from DOA so we can pursue with our interviews.
And how long ago was that packet sent to DOA?
Well, first of all, on the, on the administrative assistant, we did start the interview. The process, however, all applicants declined. So we're still waiting for the additional five to be replaced, to replace the ones that declined the interview. So that's the hangup on that one.
And your PC, your program coordinator, is that person responsible for like writing Department of Administration? I mean, not W R I T, but R I D, writing DOA to make sure that we get the, this person hired? I mean, I'm trying to, I thought that's what a PC was for. Now we're hiring an AO, you're getting a lot of administrative work, but I'm still trying to figure out when we're going to be getting...
Yes, the, the PC4 has been writing Department of Administration to try and hurry things along. One of the other things that's happened with the agricultures three was apparently there was, one of the, one of the applicants had a protest, and so that's delayed that process a bit. I'm hoping that that will be resolved soon. So that's delayed things on that for at least maybe two months or a month.
So, Mr. Spahn, how much have you budgeted or allocated for the biosecurity division?
For the biosecurity, the invasive species? Senator, are you referring to invasive species collection or...?
Oh, I thought under the invasive species act, you were supposed to establish staffing for a biosecurity division. Am I mistaken?
Yes, according to public law 3143, that's the mandate to establish the division.
And so how much have you allocated of the five, you had $519,000?
That, that's in the invasive species fund fee. That's a separate, that's a separate funding. Now, the biosecurity would consist with other accounts, like federal and other local accounts, like Dr. Campbell, for example, is being paid by general fund, which is the planned inspection fund fee in the general fund. But the invasive species is a special funding. Then you do have the CRB, which is 100% federally funded. So there are different fund sources.
Okay, because, because I keep getting complaints and calls from business people that are asking me, what is the biosecurity, I mean, the invasive species fund being used for? And maybe I should ask that question now. Is, what exactly have you been using the invasive, invasive species fund for that you've had, you've collected $519 in 16, $325 in 17? Or I think, what's, what's the status of that fund?
Well, currently, the, the total expenditure is, let me see, $398,477. And that's inclusive of a contract that we're recently working on for the invasive species iron curtain burner, which is in the amount of $354,000.
Can you repeat that again? I, I keep trying to figure out, we were, I was talking about personnel and you had money, and now you're telling me that you spent $377,000 or encumbered or what? And what's this for?
Well, on personnel only, it's $12,889.
And now you're spending $377,000 for what?
That's to include the operation.
Of what?
The operation is $385,000. Personnel is $12,889.
And the $377 is for what?
No, it's $398,477 altogether, total.
Okay.
Encumbered and expended.
What, what's encumbered and, and is being, is some burner, you said?
Well, the $354,000 is a contract for curtain iron burner to, for a reduction of the invasive species, which is CRB and fire ant.
Okay, maybe the director can now explain that.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Now, you know, with, with the little fire ant and the rhino beetle, this is one initiative. And this is actually authorized, public law 3143, to authorize that department and the division to utilize the, the fund to eradicate and to prevent incoming invasive species and at disposal of existing invasive species here on our island. So it authorizes the division under that public law that we can use that. And one of the initiative or resources that we have available is the air curtain burner. So being, you know, taking action of what's, what's going on, a prevent, preventive initiative is to use our, that resource that's available. It's, it's, we have the capacity here. We have vendors that have the capability. So this program actually entails the green waste that might possibly be infested with rhino beetle or fire ants. So that's one initiative that we can take, you know, to show the public that we're taking action. And it's authorized utilization of the funding in the public law.
That was a solution that was agreed to by the council? The use of air curtain, that air curtain burner?
Yeah, we, we had discussion on that on the council with, with the co-chair and of course, secretary, and it was put out. So, and again, it was an initiative. And this is like an initiative that maybe can go beyond the department. You know, disposal, using that method can even go to, to mayor's council for their jurisdiction, for their communities that with people that don't have assets or places to dispose of their infested green waste. What is the community? What, what are the agencies doing about to, you know, to help them out? Because you got Tuna Se, Tuna One that just cut his backyard, has no clue or resource as far as where does he dispose of potentially infested green waste. So with this initiative, again, again, it's, it's authorized to utilize this for that initiative.
May I? Uh, Mr. Spahn, the, what I'm hearing is that that money, 300-some-thousand, is encumbered for a contract that has not been put in place yet. Is that correct? The contract is still being worked out. That's, that's my understanding at this point.
We recently just submitted that to GSA for a bid process.
Okay, so that's 300-some-thousand. So out of the total budget of 500-some plus 300-some from this year and then 9,000 from the previous year, we're talking about $900,000, right? On this specific project, though, I do need to ask, is that a mobile type of a unit? Because one of the concerns, of course, are going to be, once you transport, if, if it's not mobile, then you would have to transport infested debris, right, to other, to the location. And in that transport alone could be the potential spread of the invasive species. Is that correct?
That is correct. And, and the scientific response to that, I have Dr. Campbell responding there.
Yes, Senator, the, the primary concern is transportation of the little fire ant that we would want to avoid. The coconut rhinoceros beetle is already island-wide and moving around a few piles is not going to meaningfully affect it or what the damage it might cause. So what we're looking at is, before we move any piles at all, we're going to check them for the little fire ant. If they're infested, we're going to try and use portable units to burn it in place.
Okay, so, so that's still under consideration then, whether it's going to be a portable fire curtain or not?
Right.
Right? But as of right now, what is being contemplated, at least from what I'm gathering, is that the contract contemplates a, a situated fire curtain as opposed to a mobile one. Is that, am I off base?
It would include both. The, the, there's, there are companies, there are two companies that are legally capable of bidding on this type of work. They each have both a large stationary units as well as smaller mobile units. So the small mobile units would be used, this is the concept, the small mobile units would be used on piles that were infested with little fire ants, so they do not have to be moved. And anything that's not infested with little fire ants could be moved to a centralized site where the, a large unit could be used for greater efficiency in the, that are, come from that large unit.
Right. Now, even if it was a mobile unit, a fire curtain, right, if it was situated in a certain location within the village, a village, right, who would be responsible for transporting their green waste, infested green waste to these units? Or do you anticipate this, this fire curtain to be transported throughout the village from house to house until they collect everything?
No, it, it, the mayors would be involved as to try and, you know, we're trying to look and see if there are already existing piles in the villages. And that, that's what we're trying to take care of here. We're not trying to encourage people to come forward and start cutting down trees or dragging things around. Right now, we're trying to take care of the existing problems of accumulation.
Right, right.
And the other point being that the, the companies involved have their own sites where they have their, their large ACV units. And so there's been a task force created that would, could allow DPW would also possibly be involved in moving things to those large consolidation sites.
So DPW would be involved in, in transporting some of the larger volumes to the large burning mechanism?
That's, that's the concept at this point, yes.
That's the concept. Go ahead. If I may, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned here. We've encumbered, we've encumbered over $300,000 for, for contractual services, or is this for the purchase of a curtain burner?
No, it's contractual services.
Contractual services. You've, you've got the procurement document sent down to GSA, but I, I'm not getting the sense that we've got a clear plan in our mind as to how the, the burner is going to be used, whether it's going to go from site to site, or whether the piles are going to be brought to a site. It, it just kind of sounds very fluid right now.
It's, it's because of the nature of whether the sites are infested or not with little fire ants. If it's infested with little fire ants, we don't want to move it. We want to move the burner to the site. If the sites are not infested, then we can move, consolidate those in one place and use the bigger burner for the greater efficiencies that are inherent in using the bigger burner.
The, the division has predetermined the hotspots of the fire ants and with, with map, mapping, identifying maps. So, but of course, to be updated. But they have identified the major hotspots of where not to move the green waste transporting, you know, or one area to, you know, the hotspots have been identified.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead, please. Well, I just, I wanted to invite, I know, the, I know the director of EPA is here, and I, I would like to ask him to maybe step forward and join into the discussion because we did have, I, I guess, the last, last year's experience with the air curtain burner wasn't, didn't seem to be the best, at least based on the complaints that were received. And so maybe you can, maybe you can contribute to the discussion about the use of the air curtain burners. What, what's, what's, what's to give me the comfort that what was experienced in Oka Point last year is not going to happen again when you take it into the villages or wherever you're using it?
Good morning, Chair, Speaker, Vice Speaker and Senators. So my understanding when the air curtain burner was deployed at Oka Point last year, or post Typhoon Dolphin, there was issues with the operation of the burner. The segregation of the green waste from other solid waste was not done efficiently. So, and the, I believe the temperature of the air curtain burner wasn't at optimum, at its optimum heat index. And so what happened was some of the concrete that was mixed in with the green waste produced a lot of smoke that should not have been visible or seen through optimum operations of the burner during that time. So...
So it was operator error then that caused a lot of the smoke and the complaints from the neighborhoods?
Correct. At that point, yes, sir. I, I do want to state that there's, there's a misconception that air curtain burners are, are prohibited on Guam. That's not, that's not entirely true. We, they just have to be permitted and the, on a normal basis, they have to be permitted through our agency as well as the, the contractor or the, the company that has it has to have someone certified to ensure that the opacity is at its optimum level. I, I've asked Roland Gutierrez, who's our air program manager... I, I've asked Roland Gutierrez, who's our air program manager, who oversees these burners for our level, to, to join us or join me up here, so he could probably talk more a little bit on the technicality of what the capacity certification is for the burners that are required.
Before you, and before you add, add to the discussion, is the burner services a competitive service that's available on island?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, are there more than one, is there more than one burner?
Yes, there's more than one burner on the island.
Okay. That's mobile?
Yes, and they're all mobile actually. The larger ones are mobile, they're just basically harder to move. The smaller ones are, they're put on trailers, they're actually trailer mounted and they, they pull them behind a truck.
How many has EPA permitted already?
There's two permitted companies on island right now.
Okay. Large, large?
Large and small.
Okay. I guess the follow-up question then is the contemplated contract, is it with one of the, or the company who was responsible for the Oka burning?
Yes. And I can speak further to that. And so I was the solid waste program manager at the time and the administrator was correct. What happened was initially is when DPW collected the green waste, there was a lot of commingled solid waste in it that was inside the pile. So when they put it in there and it burned, obviously green waste at the rate that it's burning would not produce any black smoke, but other solid waste in it, like tires or any other type of plastic debris, would make black smoke. And so that was one of the problems. The second problem was we went up there and made sure that they were operating properly because every time you open the chamber to refill the chamber or not, you need to use a knockdown spray so that the ash doesn't fly up. And so we made sure that they were operating properly and after we instituted the procedures that they were supposed to in their operations plans, that there was no more problems.
Then I'm, if I may go back to this, this whole issue then, the, this whole concept I understand, all right? It has to be burned somehow, it has to be gotten rid of all this waste that potentially not only housed, that not only housed them now, but could potentially be the breeding ground and, and, for, for the pests themselves going, okay, so that's for the past. So I would imagine you're contemplating as part of the plan going forward that this type of mechanism to get rid of green waste would be part of an ongoing program well into the future, right? Because every, I mean, as soon as something, somebody cuts down some green, green material, of course they're going to pile it in their backyard or wherever they're going to dispose of, or dispose of it somewhere and that'll also become a potential breeding ground. So is that a correct assumption that we can make that from now on, according to what you foresee of getting rid of invasive species, that this will be a contract that will forever be in perpetuity until we can figure out how to address some of these invasive species?
That, that is correct, yeah. It's, again, initiative and with that, we're taking action on disposal of the infested green waste. And like you mentioned, it's, it's going to perpetuate to other options, maybe other fundings through organizations, but it's one of initiative that we are taking action.
Okay.
And with, like I mentioned, this is authorized in the public law to utilize. So we do have the resources to, to utilize the vendor's capability of the equipment they have.
Right, and I appreciate that, Mr. Sablon. I guess the, the next question then becomes, or at least the next area of concern, because now we're taking, we're addressing a problem that's already there, right? The testimony earlier was that they're discovering without even going out to looking for it, right, two new invasive species every month. And so there is an issue then with the entry of the invasive species. Is there a plan working between the agencies of how to perhaps minimize or mitigate the, the incoming invasive species?
That is correct. We had, and actually just recently with Director Jim McDonnell, myself as co-chair with him, we did sign an MOU with that MOU to stipulate that we are in partnership at the border and actually with, with collaboration on the tracking mechanism of invasive species versus their mandates in, in partnership.
Right, so I guess the, the, once you're now collaborating and I can understand that's, that's makes a very commonsensical relationship, but what now is being done to address inspecting or looking for incoming invasive species that we have not seen before? Is there any? Are there any efforts? Dr. Campbell?
Senator, one of the things that I did propose when the fee was first created and I was involved in writing the economic impact analysis for the fee was that we should look at possibly in the future using part of the fee as seed money to put together an inspection facility at the port. So the container loads that are brought off of maritime ships would have a place where they could be taken into, the doors could be closed, it's a safe room in which you could open up the container and offload parts of the cargo and do your inspections there. Guam has suffered forever without the benefit of such a facility. So nowadays, every container load of product that comes off the ship goes to the importer's warehouse or goes to the side of the road next to the importer's store or whatever and it's opened up there and it has to be inspected there, meaning that when you open the door, if there's anything inside, like a female coconut rhinocerous beetle that sees the door open and the lights shine in, they can just fly away. This is not done in any other jurisdiction I know of. Every place has a safeguarding warehouse or facility where these types of inspections can be conducted. So what we're looking at now is possibly a cooperative effort between customs and agriculture as well as the federal government, the port authority and various possible funding sources to try and put, get a piece of land and put together this type of facility. And I know that the Chamber of Commerce is also in favor of this now because with the advent of the, of the new regulations on overweight cargo containers hitting the roads, they would also be able to use such a facility to be able to shift some load off of an, of an overweight container onto another container before it goes through the waste station. So this could be a win-win situation for business as well as for the regulatory agencies to try and deal with and, and solve the problem of being able to be more effective at doing inspections on these types of container loads.
Actually, in the economic impact statement that was done as a requirement to approving the inspection fee, it was shown in there that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the two million dollars that was projected to be generated annually was to be set aside for a new port inspection facility. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
That's right, Senator, I wrote that number.
Right.
And, well, now let's, let's go back to the two million dollar figure. That also was just a projection and it was done with the help of the chief economist at the Bureau of Statistics and Plans and we looked at figures on tonnages coming through the port and simply applied the simple figure of seventy-five cents per thousand pounds and that's the number we came up with. Now, we haven't even approached collecting that yet, but when we get additional staffing where we have greater oversight on what's being collected, what's being paid by the shipping companies, maybe we can get closer to it. So those figures in there are simply illustrative. They're, they're not to be taken as, as what we, what, what we expect for sure. Until we have the ability to see the actual tonnages coming in and verify that the shipping companies are paying what they're supposed to be paying based upon those tonnages, then we could look at what amounts of money might be set aside for such an inspection.
But I think, but I think the projection of two million dollars a year was reasonable with the underlying assumption that the fees were going to be collected.
That's right.
Right? Do you know if the fees are being collected?
Well, we've collected nearly a million dollars, yes, so fees are being collected. We do know that at least the major shipping company is paying regularly.
Right.
And we're just now trying to get additional staff and get the other documents in place. We have spoken to the port authority about getting an office down there so that the shipping documents could be provided to us so that we could actually backtrack and verify that everybody that's supposed to be paying is paying.
Do you know whether the port master plan includes such a facility that you're proposing? There is not, right?
Not anymore. There was at one time, I believe, such a facility was envisioned in the master plan, but I believe it got cut out of the final version of the master.
I believe a wash rack is probably the closest to it. Okay, and in your estimate, sir, estimation perhaps, you know what it costs, the cost, an estimated cost, I mean, I know it's going to be a ballpark figure of what such a facility would, would cost?
Yeah, I'm just thinking maybe fifteen, twenty million dollars.
So it'd be basically a big warehouse, I would imagine of some sort?
Right.
You drive in, it had some special equipment in it?
Have equipment for offloading and then transferring cargoes into other containers. It would have to have possibly a facility, I went to a facility in Houston where you could take an entire forty-foot container inside, open the door and then fumigate it and you didn't have to offload the cargo, you just fumigate it. And then you have a gas recovery system so that the methyl bromide gas is recompressed and can be reused and not just released into the atmosphere. So these things are kind of expensive. That one in Houston, I think they spent sixty-five million dollars on it. It would accommodate however, five or six containers at once. We wouldn't need such a big thing here. But you do need to have the ability to have basically a warehouse that you can do these things inside and then have an area where you could do some sort of treatments like that.
And just, I'm sorry.
Just, I'm sorry, but was the port in the discussions on the need for this structure before they tore down that huge warehouse that seemed indestructible at the time? I mean, it would seem to me that that would have been large enough. I know it may have been in the wrong location for offloading, but it seemed it was, it would have been the perfect size for this, this operation before it was demolished. And I, we're talking about an additional fifteen million dollars to put something up that took us, I don't know, ten million to take down? Some ridiculous number.
I, I'm not sure, Speaker, about that. I do know that we've been in discussions about the need for such a facility for twenty years or more and, and I think that they did have the concept long ago.
No, but not the concept, the building that was there, there was this huge warehouse that was at the port. And I know there was major discussion about the, the walls were like two feet thick in concrete and it was, they had to...
I don't know.
And it was taken down. But the other thing that I'm trying to get back to is we keep talking about not having enough personnel to be able to check to see how much we're losing or not collecting. And I'm still, again, going back to when? When are we going to get more than one person on this if we can collect the two million a year that was projected?
I wish I could answer that question. I've been trying to get people since the outset of this, this law, thirty-one forty-three.
Dr. Campbell, I would like to commend you for your patience because just listening to this is, it's really very frustrating, I think, and the people of Guam have waited for this for so long and to be told that one of the issues is we can't determine, nobody's monitoring the tonnage of the things that are coming in, it's, it really sounds ridiculous to me that, I mean, we're supposed to be working together, right? And customs is there, they're at the port, the port authority, I mean, they want to build a seventeen million dollar building with, it was nowhere in their plans when they presented that building plan to us, you know, they want to float a bond for it, that they were going to even address this. They were, customs was going to have a little office on the side, but, yeah, so I'm, I'm shocked and honestly, I can't see why if customs, I can't see why between any of the other agencies, they can't determine the tonnage of things that are coming in. It's, it's, it's automatic, it's, that, that data's already being collected, it's just a matter of getting it to you. And, and even if you don't have personnel to review it, why, why can't somebody else review it? It, it seems to me that it would be, you know, customs according to this is the one really that's in charge. You're supposed to be, you know, reorganizing your agency to further address agricultural security and enforcement consistent with this act. You shall work with the bios, you shall have jurisdiction over border inspections and quarantine and shall work with the biosecurity division towards the eradication. I mean, customs, it's, it's, you're there already. I can't see why you can't facilitate that if, if we can get more fees out of that, then, then it's going to benefit you also. I can see this immediately, I'm sure you can too, and I know you haven't been there all this while, but, but really the timing is, the people watch their plants die and we just, now we're being told, oh, a burner is a possible solution after all these years? It, it, it's not working for me. I, I don't care whether we get the personnel into that biosecurity division, I mean, of course, if the plan was made years ago, how you could get your personnel to monitor these things, still, even without that, I can't see why we can't get a report as to whether, you know, the proper tonnage is being reported and whether the fees match and then we can determine immediately. The council should take this up at their next meeting, you know, or do the documents match? I mean, council members can do this without hiring another staff, I think, just to tell us at least for a certain period, do, do the numbers match, right? Or do you believe you're getting the fees that you're entitled to or is this? And, and the fees are supposed to be used for all kinds of things, including the personnel, which you're saying is being, personnel's being funded by general fund only at this point, except for one? And, and it's supposed to be to recruit and hire the coordinator, provide the staffing for the entire division, suppress and eradicate the species and so I suppose that's how this funding of the burner is allowed under that provision and develop the management plan and its updates. But I don't know, I don't know if the rest of you are, I, I have to commend you all for your patience. It, it really does seem, yeah, that we are, and now even with the burner, right, we have these, these questions, but I'm assuming EPA now is going to really be on top of that. What is the possibility, I mean, did the, is this something that was contemplated years ago and rejected, the burner, when we first were told about the rhinocerous beetle?
No, I, I believe not, no. But Madam Vice Speaker, when you, when you did mention about customs, what our plan is when we do have the staff for operational, we will be posting our staff shoulder to shoulder with customs and port as far as data collection. That's one of our plans. So onsite, they will have readily the information, that, that's our plan. So it's not just our staff being in-house at...
No, I saw that and I, I, I see that that's part of the plan is to station somebody down there, but I, from my view right now, I mean, because these things are urgent and, and we can't just keep saying we're waiting for this, waiting for that, I just can't see why that can't be done right now. Without, without a new staff, why can't customs send their data or the port authority send their data and then you and your council review it and see whether, whether what you're receiving looks correct and simple as that. I mean, does it match? It's one, one of the first things to look at, right? And, and then do the fees. Are you getting those fees? I mean, I can't imagine that the port does not collect that data at this point and that they cannot transmit that to you without you putting a person down there. I don't know, that's my understanding, this, that makes sense.
You can go to the legislature's latest website. Port Authority submits its report monthly that has the number of containers that come off the ships.
That's what I thought.
And the tonnage of loose...
Then use that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, then use the data. I think the council should just start right away, don't wait for another employee, take the data and tell us, you know, tell us the result, tell us you're getting your money or that they're not paying enough or that, you know? Tell us you're getting your money, or that they're not paying enough, or that, you know, and that's it, start there. And, and let's see, I mean, because if we're, if we know right now that we're getting whatever you're, or the, the division is getting what it's entitled to, but it's not enough to meet what we need to provide, that's something we should be able to determine within thirty days, I would think, don't you think? So, yeah, I, I'm impatient because, I mean, you know, we, this is our families, everybody here, I mean, this is what we're going through, we're watching our coconut trees die, that was very, people are, people still can't get over that, that the government of Guam could not come up with a solution to stop that. And, yeah, so please, as fast as you can, do what you need. I mean, this fumigation center, I, I remember, I want to say twenty years ago, when I was first counseled to the legislature, they talked about what they were going to do to inspect, you know, anything that might disturb our plants at the ports. And so Customs, yeah, please, I hope, I hope to see you in your minutes, in your next meeting, and maybe you need to meet more often because of our urgent situation. I mean, just, I don't know, if you could consider those things, I'd appreciate it. At the, but, thank you.
I, I guess from now, by now, Mr. Director, I know you've been dying to say something, and I would appreciate your input. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and everyone else here. You know, as I retired, you know, in Customs in two thousand and three, we had warehouse two down there at the port, our ports were all, you know, we were fulfilling our mandates and everything. Today, as, you know, I, I came back, you know, months ago, only to find out that we're sixty percent less, you know, in our, our manpower, our warehouse down at the port, you know, someone put us out, you know, took us out of the equation, you know, to save money. And, you know, with this body here and, you know, being involved here as a vice chair for the Invasive Species Council, I strongly recommend to, you know, you guys, the lawmakers out there, to give us more teeth, you know, Customs, because we're not only enforcing local mandates, but also ninety percent federal mandates to give us that authority to control the borders. Because, you know, today, as, you know, we're down there at the port, we don't have, we're not in the decision-making process of where, where our office is going to be at, where are we gonna contain suspect containers, containers that are infested. Now we're forced to take those containers out to, what is it, today, eleven container freight stations out there? I think that's a very risky thing to, to move, and I, I agree with Dr. Campbell that, and Mr. Herschel here from the chamber, that all shipments must be contained on the ports of entry. And that's where we can eradicate this problem with invasive species and other contraband. So I, I think this body can legislate and, you know, give us that, more authority in the borders, just like the airport again, so that our officers can properly fulfill their mandates to, to strengthen the borders and to prevent these injurious harms, you know, to our people out there, and also to protect, you know, our visitors and commerce. That's all I wanted to say.
Can I just ask, in another hearing for a different topic, we were told that Customs does not inspect every container, that they don't have a one-hundred-percent inspection rate or something, and what about that? I mean, is that, is that correct?
Yes, you know, with today's technology and all that, we're, if we were to spec each container, pay less, and Kmart will probably won't get their container until two weeks later, so, you know, we have to use smart technology and do a, a random inspection. We have our, our guys, you know, that go through the manifests, you know, make sure that, you know, they do random inspections, and...
Are, are you able to adjust your inspections based on what's been found to be, where the invasive species have been found? Perhaps, like, there's been a lot of pictures on social media regarding the, the rhino beetles in potting soil and that kind of type of thing that's being imported? I mean, so are you able to adjust based on, on the findings by our agents, by our other agencies or, or by the council?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned, you know, the potting soil, because those are commercially sealed, and that's a very challenging task to, you know, that I like to refer also to Dr. Campbell, because those things come from the U.S. mainland, and, you know, they're, it's wrapped in plastics, and we're, you know, we've seen where, you know, where some of these potting soil have, you know, infestations inside, so to me, that's the, the thing that we need to address, you know, is the potting soil issue, Dr. Campbell, you know, because these things come from the U.S. mainland, and we need to see how, maybe we can legislate something that any type of soil or anything that's used for propagation must be fumigated, you know, and containerized, like what they do in Hawaii. You know, they have a very strict enforcement over there when it comes to USDA, you know, nothing comes out of that ship in break bulk. Everything has to be containerized, and the manifests are all in order so that Customs won't have a hard time looking at a, you know, suspect cargo, because here in Guam right now, somebody can come in at the port and just put down household goods, general merchandise, and here's our poor guys, you know, trying to open up that container and look for, it's like looking for a needle in a haystack. So, you know, we need, you know, stronger mandates, you know, so that we can work with the Chamber of Commerce and with the businesses out there and educate them and say, guys, when you bring in your cargo, your ten, forty-foot cargo, please put them down, you know, accordingly, so that when Customs is gonna open up that container, they can, you know, they can detect whatever suspect cargo, so.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
And I appreciate that, because we do know it's a very difficult task, and because of the amount of containers come in, you know, every week, it's just impossible to inspect every single one. I don't think any port inspects every single container that comes through. It's, it's, it's a very challenging task. I, I do want to switch a little bit on, in terms of the funding, because that's really where I was trying to get back to from the speaker, when I was talking about the funding and whatnot. But there was mention earlier that DOA last year started to kick in some kind of funding. Is that correct?
The only funding that we have currently right now is the CRB to the tune of hundred fifty thousand dollars, but in twenty seventeen, it would be, what is that, the twenty seventeen? In twenty seventeen, CRB is going to be given two hundred thousand dollars.
CRB, can you just, what is CRB?
It's a hundred percent fairly funded coconut rhino beetle.
What does CRB stand for?
Coconut rhino beetle.
I'm sorry, oh, coconut, coconut rhino beetle. Okay, and so you get some funding for the coconut rhino beetle?
Let me...
One fifty and then two fifty going forward?
Well, yes.
That's from USDA.
That's from, oh, USDA, not DOA.
Not DOA, not DOA.
Department of the Interior, I just wrote a grant for seventy-five thousand for Little Fire Ant Outreach. I think you may have seen the recent public release on that from the Department of the Interior. And there was also some considerable amount of money was going to the University of Guam also, part of it to work on CRB and part of it to work on Little Fire Ant.
All these federal funds that are coming in, are you able to utilize all of it, or are you having to return some of that money?
Sometimes we have to return some of it because we, again, have problems getting people hired quickly enough, and...
Are you looking at returning anything for two thousand and sixteen?
For two thousand and sixteen, yes, yes, I think so.
About how much?
Maybe a hundred thousand.
That's about almost half of what you got?
It's more than that, more than that for that grant.
I see. Okay.
And you're saying, in essence, that if you had the people in place, that you'd be able to expend those funds for the purposes that they're supposed to go to?
Again, these, yeah, these federal grant, this particular federal grant, for example, starts on September one. You need to have people onboard September the first, starting, because if you've got ninety percent of your budget is for personnel, then you need to have the personnel in place right away or as soon as possible. On this particular grant, we didn't get anybody hired until March, and then only two people, and then we just got another person hired about a month ago. So that's why a lot of that money's gonna have to go back. If we were to get an extension of time on that particular grant, then the grant we have for the next fiscal year would be taken away, because you can't do, you can't do the same thing at the same time.
On this hiring of personnel, where, where is the problem? Getting DOA to approve the job description and the duties and responsibilities and all that write-up? Or is it the recruitment process of where they have to announce it, they have to interview people? Where is that problem?
Well, because it's a hundred percent fairly funded, we usually pick them up...
Can you, can you take the mic closer to you?
Because it's a hundred percent fairly funded, we pick them up as limited term, which is a name GG one. There are instances where they do not qualify because they did not fill out the application completely, so that's going back again to have them resubmit. Those are part of the delays.
But that doesn't include hiring using the local funds, right? So the question is, if we had hired some, if we hire people with the local funding from the inspection fees, right, those people would qualify to be working under the federal programs, correct?
Well, if you hire them on invasive species fund fee or any local funds, you have to restrict it to that funding. If, if you're hired on a federal funds, you got to, you have to restrict that funding also. You cannot commingle...
Understood. But then you would have at least people who would be able to work using the federal funds to implement any programs and policies that you have, right? So whether or not they were being paid through the federal funding, you would have people onboard, right, who could, you could then use that hundred fifty thousand that you received or the, the expected two hundred fifty thousand that you're expecting to receive to implement programs, and so not necessarily to hire the people or pay the people with, but to use it for the programs, whether it's the eradication of the, of the fire curtain, whether it's, again, whatever the program may be that the biosecurity division is looking forward to. And, and again, I, I just want to make that point, that, that it doesn't necessarily, the issue is not who's gonna fund the bodies, the issue is getting the bodies in to implement the programs.
Well, when you, Senator, with all due respect, if you're hiring somebody with federal funds, they have to stay within the federal funding.
Right, but what I'm saying is that if we hire them with the local funds, they can still use the federal funds to implement the programs.
Well...
Yeah, yes, Senator, I, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's, it doesn't matter what source that employee was hired, it's the program that you can actually utilize to, to, for, for his...
Correct. Well, it just hurts my heart that we're returning money that's being given to us for these kind of programs, right? And if you're saying the reason why we have to return it because we don't have any bodies in there, then you're right, it's, it's irrelevant where they're hired from, it's just like, we're getting all these monies, and yet we can't use it, and we gotta give it back because we didn't hire anybody. It, it just doesn't kind of jive in my mind that we're...
Just, just to clarify what you're...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I, I, I guess the, I guess the question that I was just asked was, can these positions, can these positions be established by law as opposed to having to go through all this, you know, through DOA and all that? And, and I don't know, I guess that's, obviously, the, the hiring of the personnel is something that, that needs to be really dug into deeper, I, part of it, I think, part of my frustration is probably not, just not understanding, you know, where all the obstacles are. I, I have a question about the invasive species fee and the fund is, was established by law for a specific purpose, correct? And to basically fund a biosecurity division and, and, and to set aside some money for an inspection facility and all that. Has the council developed and approved a budget for, obviously, your, the collection experience from two thousand and sixteen was only five hundred thousand dollars? I don't know if, if you expect to collect that much, but do you, does the, has the council approved a budget based on, on an assumed budget or revenues that's gonna come in to be able to, to fund it? Like, for example, you've got three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that's, that's going to be set aside for air curtain contractual services. I mean, that pretty much wipes out whatever you got in the, in the funds, right? So you wipe that out, you can't hire any people because you don't have any money.
Yeah, yeah. No, Senator, currently, right now, the expenditure for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. There's still a balance of a hundred and twenty-one thousand that we have for twenty fifteen and sixteen. It's twenty seventeen, that's three hundred and twenty-five collected, and that has to be appropriated by the legislature, but currently...
It's untouchable right now, right?
I'm sorry?
It's untouchable right now.
That's right, that's right. Because this funding is only appropriated by legislative appropriation, but currently, with all these expenditures to include the three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, there's still a balance of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. And currently, I am putting in also personnel actions for Clerk Typus III, and there's another position that Dr. Campbell wanted me to submit. So because of the hundred and twenty-one thousand, we can continue with the additional personnel for the invasive species.
You said there was expenditures in twenty fifteen of three hundred something?
Well, in, in twenty, well, in twenty fifteen, we only collected nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
In twenty sixteen, it's five hundred and nineteen.
You collected, but what, you, you mentioned an expenditure of three hundred...
The expenditure is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand of the five hundred and nineteen.
And am I correct to assume that the expenditure includes the encumbrance of funds for the air curtain?
Correct.
So, but, which has not happened yet?
So the balance...
Okay, so it's just encumbered, but it's not been spent?
Right, right.
I see, okay. And I would imagine that going forward, this, based upon what we discussed earlier, that the burning of, through this mechanism is part of the ongoing plan into the future to get rid of waste that's infected, is gonna be going on, so we can anticipate that that contract might even grow?
You know, Senator, like, like I mentioned, this, this is one initiative that we can take action for disposal of green waste infested with, with fire ants or rhino beetle. It's an initiative, we have available resources, vendors with available equipment, so, in, in taking action, and, and again, authorized by public law, but, but it's, I might say it's an example of what we can do in the future. It, it's an action that we're doing to dispose...
Mrs. Vaughn, let's, let's make sure that we're perfectly clear. I'm not against it. I mean, we need to eradicate, and we, and we do need to eradicate where they're thriving, and if it's in the green waste that's, that's out there, right, that, that's a viable plan. I'm just trying to figure out going forward, right, because you have a lot of mandates, because getting rid of what's on island or at least trying to control is one thing, but then this is a real big program to not only control it at the borders, right? I mean, we talked about that, and we've, now we have to reexamine everything, what's happening at the port, to see how we encompass that. But also, again, I, I'm not against the burning, and maybe one of the solutions is maybe have a one day where we all burn and get the, you know, and, or, you know, village-by-village type thing, so, you know, with the fire department being there on standby, and let's just do this and get rid as much as possible. I don't know if that's even a solution, but I'm just saying that I'm not against eradicating the present pests that are in the piles of way, green waste that there are now. So no need to justify it, I'm just trying to understand what the bigger picture's gonna be, because that's only one part of the solution, right? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do I understand correctly? Do I understand correctly that maybe this air curtain initiative is being driven by an emergency declaration by the governor?
That is correct. There was an executive order put out.
When was that executive order put out?
I believe it was July 13?
Just last week.
A couple of weeks ago. The, does that, does that mean there will not be competitive bidding for that? What is this, what stage is that? Is that awarded already?
No, not yet. No, Senator, not yet. However, there's only two permitted, EPA permitted vendors, and it was Pacific Unlimited and LMS. The others that we, that, there is mention that there are others, but they're not permitted by, or approved by EPA.
Are you going to do a solicitation, or does the emergency-
That has been, yes, Senator, that has been submitted to GSA. They're currently working on the bid process.
Mr. Vaughn, I, I'm trying not to micromanage him here, but I'm really concerned about the use of the funds. Your administrative assistant is saying there's 121 million dollars, I mean, $121,000 left. How much is being budgeted for the coordinator, the invasive species coordinator, which was the first person that was supposed to be hired by this fund? What, what is the salary for that person? Or how much is being budgeted for that?
Okay, the proposed invasive species coordinator is $100,875, and that's to include benefits. Salary is $40,000. So with benefits, $60,113, it would amount to $107,85.
Try, try that again, I'm-
Okay. The invasive species coordinator is budgeted at $40,762.
Base salary?
Salary only, yes. With benefits of $60,113, it will require $108,75 annually. And we still need to have that established or created.
But so far today, you said you put in a request for a clerk typist and a administrative assistant, right?
Well, those are all taken, those are all already in the process, so I haven't done-
And how much is being budgeted for that, for those two positions?
Well, we still haven't hired them, Senator. It's towards the end of the fiscal year, so we, we won't be requiring a lot of funding for that.
I, I, I understand. All I'm saying is, the law stated that the coordinator was supposed to be the first person hired. You couldn't put together the thing, so you have a program coordinator that's supposed to write this up and get this through. You now only have $121,000 left, of which 100 is needed for that coordinator, but you, so far today, you said you want to hire an administrative assistant and a clerk typist on top of it. No offense, but the clerk typist isn't going to have anything to type if the administrator, if the coordinator isn't hired first.
That's right.
Dr. Campbell, the, the position description write-up and job response, is that already complete? I just need to understand that. Is, is that part of the recruitment process completed already?
You're talking about the invasive species coordinator?
I'm talking about all the positions that's supposed to be in the biosecurity division.
Yeah, well, the way it's been, the only one that we've been trying to create is invasive species coordinator. All the other positions that we're trying to recruit for the division already exist in the classified service.
Okay.
And we tried to do that so that we could get people hired as soon as possible.
Do we have candidates locally for an invasive species coordinator that may qualify for that?
I think we would have, yes.
I see.
It's basically, if I recall correctly, it's been put in for a bachelor of science degree and four years of experience, or a master of science degree.
Director Vaughn, can I see, can I get a, can the committee get a copy of the budget that has been approved by the council for the expenditure of whatever projected funds are to be collected from the, from the invasive species fee, inspection fee? I just want to see how you've, how you've projected the expenditure of that for at least FY, well, for FY 18? And I'm curious to see what that budget would look like for FY 17. Now, I think an earlier law which appropriated funds from FY 15 and 16, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so only that money, whatever was collected in 16, you collected about 500,000, correct? And about 9,000 from FY 15?
Correct.
Right? So then there's FY 17 that's still sitting there, and I'm certainly curious to see how that's going to be budgeted. And then also, I would like to see what's being budgeted for FY 18, because I don't think those funds, Mr. Speaker, are, have been even incorporated in, in the FY 18 budget. So would it be possible to get that by first thing next week?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, fine, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Go ahead. So I think the, the technology and the concept of utilizing the air curtain burner, I think that's not disputable. I understand from Mr. Palacios's time at the Guam EPA that there's also learned long-term strategies such as composting and dealing with this type of waste. My question is pretty straightforward. Do you think any one of the directors here, or yourself, Dr. Campbell, that it would be advisable for the government, instead of contracting, to instead invest in this type of technology for future uses, either for the government of Guam or the mayor's council?
One of the things that we have contemplated is the long-term in this. The air curtain burner is a, is an immediate solution for something. And in our case, the way I see it is it's, it's a helpful solution to try and limit the spread of the little fire ant, and also get rid of accumulated green waste from the last couple of years that is also serving as a host for the coconut rhinoceros beetle and probably other things as well. But in the long-term, we see composting as the solution, because there is a capability of, of chipping material and then composting it using temperature controls and turning the piles regularly and so on in such a way that it will heat the pile up and eliminate invasive species. And then at the end, you don't end up with just a pile of ash, but you also have valuable material to be incorporated into the soil for landscaping and agricultural purposes. And I think EPA would agree with me on this, that the, the best solution to dealing with organic waste is to treat it as organic waste and work it back into the soils to improve the soils on the island. So that's really what we advocate from the scientific standpoint. Now, Guam has suffered from not having a comprehensive green or brown waste management plan. And when the, the new waste management landfill was put in place, one of the first things they said was that you can't bring any green waste here. And so everybody is put in a position, well, what do we do with it? Well, this is why we hope that we're starting a process here that's going to lead to a long-term solution to that question. What do we do with it? And how is it going to fit in and benefit society?
If you don't mind, I, yeah, so Guam EPA, as you mentioned, Senator, does, we are working on a long-term plan, both for green waste and other waste streams. Because of the need, when I was approached by the invasive species council and the task forces, we need to eliminate this green waste because it's basically, you know, allowing our invasive species to increase their population and spread. So, so when I was approached about using the air curtain burners, that was a discussion I actually engaged with the regional administrator for region nine and saying that there are some, some of these issues that are preventing our Guam to eliminate invasive species is some of the permitting processes that we have, both federally and locally. And so she saw the need as well, that for us to lose our coconut trees and, and the potential of harm from the little fire ant as well, that, you know what? She advised her staff, work with Guam and don't be the hindrances to eliminating and reducing the population of invasive species. That's why, even though some of the permit requirements may not be totally met as far as the opacity certification, we're, they're allowing us to go ahead and use the air curtain burners, but only as an emergency situation. As soon as we figure out or get a better control, then all the permit requirements would be needed if someone wanted to continue to use the air curtain burner. But as been mentioned by many, our long-term goal, once we have a better control on coconut rhinob beetle, the little fire ant, and hopefully no, no other invasive species, is to have the green waste be composted, to be turned into soil. I mean, we mentioned it earlier, people are buying soil in Guam, or shipping in soil from, from outside of our shores. We have, if we do it right, which is what the plan is, and what would be developed to do, is we'll produce our own soil. We have a lot of greenery. If we compost it right, yeah, maybe it'll take a while before we start building, building this soil, but we should be able to do that ourselves and not always need to import soil from, from outside.
If I can just follow on to that composting, whatnot. Has the milit, has there been, are you privy to information as to what the military is going to do with all that vegetation that's going to be cleared on that, for the, for the rifle range?
Yeah. So, yeah, we've been engaging with them. The current plan right now is to compost it. And so today, we're having a meeting this afternoon with their environmental section in regards to the setup of their composting station and the permitting for that.
Are they going to do like what they did at the airport, where they, as they, as they cleared up the vegetation, they chipped it right there and put it right back in?
We haven't discussed the details of the plan, so they're, they're coming in today to, to get all of the information regarding our permitting requirements.
But it's going to be composted?
And what that will entail is for them to submit an operations plan and how they will go about completing that project.
Okay.
That's hundreds of acres of limestone forest, right, we're talking about there?
Yes.
And much bigger than a rifle range. It's a, it's a multi-level firing range, but what, when can we expect the brown, I mean, the, the green waste plan?
So currently, we're, we're in the process of putting out a contract to help develop our zero waste, which would include the green waste plan. So the contract is, we don't have a contract, or we have it, we just solicited it out, and I think we should, you know, when the-
So Monday, we'll be doing the evaluations for the RFP, and I believe there's a certain timeframe. I'm not the chairperson on that, so I couldn't give you the exact date, but I'm part of the committee. And after we do the evaluations, we'll be setting out the offers, the proposals, decides who is the top, and then we'll send out, start negotiations from the top down.
So you've solicited for a waste management plan that includes more than green waste? What, what, what else does it include?
It includes everything, recycling, green waste.
And one company is going to do all of that? That's the plan?
Well, they're going to assist us for technical assistance in, in developing. So part of it is updating our solid waste management plan for the island of Guam, which we're required to do every five years. And then the rest of it is the zero waste plan that was put forth by the, the governor, and implementing all of the aspects of that. And then we have not updated our rules and regulations for solid waste, I believe, since the late 70s. And part of that plan is to also update the regulations and update the fees.
And again, this is to, to develop the plan and to share it with the other agencies and, and folks, so that this is the plan that's going to be moving forward and not, not necessarily what, you know, the perception is Guam EPA will do all the implementation? No, we're just, we're providing the oversight of, of these rules and regs that we're going to be developing.
So we'll be working in conjunction with the solid waste authority. And I believe the solid waste authority is going to be transferred back to the government of Guam. They're currently in negotiations for a general manager, and so we will be working closely with them.
All right. It just seems to me that we already have an existing solid waste plan, but there are certain portions of it that do not exist at all, like the green waste plan, and that that could have been done, you know, piecemeal in order to get that expertise and, and to get it created sooner.
One of the obstacles to that is the Guam solid waste authority is under receivership. And so we've tried to go ahead and try and work with them, but that's all controlled by the judge. And so whatever aspects that we've tried to implement, we've been sort of a roadblock that, because we don't have control of the solid waste authority.
Those permitting restrictions that you described, where it requires an emergency before we're able to permit the air curtain burners, is that, is that correct?
So, so we have, the existing companies that have the air curtain burners have Guam EPA solid waste processing permits, so that they have, they have achieved and accomplished. There is a opacity certification that they need to be able to provide, which basically is having someone certified that they can see what is being emitted from the burner and making sure that it meet, it's within the federal regulations. And so that is the one part that is being waived, so to speak, until, because of this emergency declaration. Now, we do have staff that, that does that, so we can enforce that, to ensure that they do. But we cannot do, you know, it wouldn't be justifiable for our staff to do that for a private company, to, to say, yeah, you're doing it right, except for us overseeing and regulating them.
But one of the senators asked if it was considered that the government of Guam purchased its own air curtain burner, and then, then that would be feasible, that we would have staff in the government of Guam that, that could comply with EPA and not-
Yes. Basically, it's a conflict of interest for a regulator to certify a machine that's going to be certified to US EPA. So basically, your opacity requirements are under federal regulations, they have the own opacity and a record-keeping requirement. And so when they start that generator, I mean, sorry, air curtain burner, I'm sorry, I'm the air program, so I'm always talking generators. They start the air curtain burner at the beginning of the year, every year they must certify that it's, reaches its maximum charge rate, that the opacity is not over 20%. And so every year, they do that. And the problem with that is there is no certification available on island. The closest certification available is in Hawaii, and that's two years. And so the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, they basically spends $8,000 a year getting somebody certified. So the certification is only good for six months. And so we certify in August and in February. And so a private company would have to send somebody every year to certify every six months if they were going to, you know, a new startup would come up, because it's only good for six months, and spend about $4,000 a year. And that's one of the roadblocks that they have not done it.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch upon the, somebody mentioned earlier that they're collaborating with our regional partners. And, you know, as the vice speaker highlighted, you know, a lot of us are affected almost immediately by the things that are happening in our backyard. But this threat upon the Pacific icon is real, and it's in American Samoa. I saw it for myself. I understand it's in the Republic of Balau. It's right here, and it's in Hawaii. And so I want to encourage you, while we're limiting discussion primarily around the local budget, to leverage your reach as a Pacific community and send a strong message that the implications, the financial destruction upon this icon, tangible- that the implications, the financial destruction upon this icon, tangible and/or intangible, in my humble opinion, is well worth more than the $200,000 we get for this jurisdiction or whatever it is. So I want to encourage you to, to think out of the box, be entrepreneurial, and be firm in our message that we need help. We certainly didn't bring this upon ourselves. And so I thank you for, for collaborating and I, I just want to, to encourage you to do more of the same.
Do any of the other senators have any further questions?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate this oversight and this exchange with everybody who's here. And, and I think the takeaway from this is that we all understand the urgency of addressing the invasive species issues. We do know that it's not a single path to resolving and mitigating invasive species. But I think this discussion really brought about many factors we do need to address and that really requires a lot more communication between the agencies and the stakeholders involved, just to keep it moving forward. This has been on the table now for six, seven years, in fact, probably even longer, you know. I think we need to revisit some of the issues down at the port, right, to assist this effort, especially if they're going for a new bond borrowing to build out more, you know, facilities down there. That probably wasn't thought about. But I do appreciate it and I, I just, I just want to say, you can hear the, the concern on our side. We know that you have a lot of mandates in front of you, not just this one singular issue of invasive species, but it's an important component of making sure that our island is not negatively affected by what's happening with the advent of these species coming into our island. It does affect our quality of life. And I think the Senate, good senator's point in terms of leveraging all this information and knowledge and, and the destruction that it's causing, not just to us, but to throughout the Pacific, perhaps would get, you know, some support if you could just unify those voices and those concerns that DC, whether it's Department of Agriculture, whether it's DOI, whoever it may be, right, to assist in our efforts. I do appreciate the input of EPA. And again, my takeaway from their discussion is that US EPA has given us some leeway, you know, to be able to, to address this situation. And again, I think that's a good example of what we can do going forward and talking with our federal counterparts to assist however they can. But I do appreciate your participation in this discussion this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, did you have any comments?
I was just hoping that at some point we might all agree on what the top priority might be, because I thought if I heard correctly, that the inability to be, or, or our inability to be able to address the rhinoceros beetle invasion might have been precipitated by the fact that we haven't addressed the brown tree snake. I thought that's what I heard, that, and I'm trying to figure out exactly which, which one should we be more concerned about. And I know the doctor said his was the ant, and so I'm trying to figure out which, which one we're addressing. I'm hoping that at some point we'll agree.
Vice Speaker?
Thank you. I, before, before we close, I just want to make sure I, I understand correctly. So this, this was the organizational structure for the biosecurity division. Basically shows the director for Department of Agriculture, and, and you have the chief of the biosecurity division answering to Dr. Campbell. Is this the first time you've seen this organizational chart? Oh, okay.
I've seen it before.
Okay. So I just want to understand of, in this organizational structure, am I to understand correctly that the only positions that have been filled then is the chief of the biosecurity division and, and a program coordinator and the administrative support? I, I just need to understand, because my understanding is that we've hired two people. You're one of them and Ms., Mrs. Babalta is the other one, as a program coordinator four.
Well, I would point out, that's one diagram that was envisioned as a possibility for the future, I think. Actually, we have rehired me. I worked for 23 years for the Department of Agriculture and then retired for a year and then came back last October. And then we did hire the program coordinator four, and part of her job is to oversee the collection of the feed.
Right.
We're also trying to get the invasive species coordinator, whose primary job would be to coordinate for the council and do, do the work of the council, basically. Now, we're also trying to get other positions in the division that have not been filled for many, many years, such as a clerk typist, administrative assistant, cashier, replace commodity inspectors that we've lost over the years, and also hire some people to improve our outreach to the public in what I call the invasive species section, where we have people go out helping people with little fire ants, doing outreach programs, training the public and so on. So we have two sections in the division, invasive species section, which is an outreach section for the public, and then the, what I call the plant inspection section, which is a law enforcement section that assists customs and inspections and oversees the, the inspections at the plant inspection facility and works with the federal government in that, USDA. So they're, they're actually, fill a role for the Department of Agriculture to make sure that the inspections are done correctly and adequately at the ports of entry and at the plant inspection facility.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Sablon, can I, can I get the committee a, a copy of the organizational structure? Apparently this is not the, the organizational structure that's, that's being utilized now.
No, we, we have one that was turned in with the budget request that was signed by the director Sablon.
Okay.
That's the one that's the actual organizational chart for the division.
For the biosecurity division?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Yes. Yes?
Going back to that position, the biosecurity chief, are there special requirements for that position? I mean, background that he has, he or she needs to have?
If you're talking about the chief of the biosecurity division...
That's you?
I've been, yes, I've been serving in that role actually since, I was, when I came in, in, in October of 92, we had the plant protection quarantine section in the Department of Agriculture. And in January of 93, I was made the chief of that section. And so I was the chief of the PPQ section ever since then. When the division was created by the law, public law 3143, and then by executive order in 2011, I just, as the entomologist became the chief of the division, served as the chief of the division.
Maybe I'm asking for the wrong position. The position that needs to be hired, are we talking about then the territorial invasive species coordinator? That's the one we need to hire, that who will work under the board or for the board?
Yes, yes, that's invasive species coordinator.
Now, I guess the question then belongs to that position. Does that position require any special background?
Absolutely, absolutely. They have to have a background in invasive species and be able to also have the experience and, and expertise to do this coordination at the highest level, because they're going to be representing the government of Guam in international organizations, such as the regional invasive species committee.
That's right.
And also they're going to be charged with, during the work of the council, which means coordinating everybody at the cabinet level.
That's right.
And with the federal government as well.
And I appreciate that answer because that's my understanding as well. And the question then becomes whether the $40,000 base salary is acceptable to someone with that kind of expertise and someone with those kind of abilities to be able to negotiate on behalf of the government of Guam, whether it be a regional, international, or federal at the federal level. And so are we...
My recommendation...
Are we setting that salary too low that attracts nobody of any qualification?
Yes, sir. My recommendation was that it be a lot higher than that, that it be, I think, that it be at least a grade O, if not P, because of the nature of the position.
Okay.
And that's, again, as I've mentioned, trying to get this across to HR has been difficult because it, it's a different kind of position than has been created before in the government of Guam.
Right. And so, I mean, but that being said, and now that it's articulated, again, perhaps the director needs to go back and really try to really figure out in terms of the funding that you anticipate to come in and maybe even assisting, bringing more funding in, right, of really making sure that the position is, is really going to draw the person that we need to fill this position. That's, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And again, my question is, do you think that that sort of experience and expertise is available locally, or are we going to have to go hire from off-island?
I can think of at least one or two people locally, but I'm, certainly it would be behoove us to also try to advertise internationally, I would think. I know, I've been to, a member of the plant, Pacific Plant Protection Organization for 20 years, which is the organization of, of 23 nations in the Pacific region. And many of these places in the South Pacific, they, they regularly will advertise internationally for this type of position. And if, if we're lucky, we could get somebody from New Zealand or Australia or Fiji or somewhere else that has a lot of expertise in this area.
Yeah. If we're going to bring in somebody like that from off-island, you ain't going to have enough money for air curtain burner.
We've also had troubles, you know, recruiting a botanist and a plant pathologist as well. We did open the botanist position, I believe it was nearly 15 years ago, and because it was also, I think, starting at $50,000 a year, we had one applicant, I couldn't coax him to accept the position before he was hired out from under me by Hawaii, so he's been at the University of Hawaii ever since. But he came from American Samoa and had, had good, good credentials as a botanist and a horticulturist.
Can you, are you able to use the federal funding for the bio, I mean, for that burner?
No, no. The, the federal funding that we are capable of securing comes from the farm bill and it's specifically targeted towards dealing with pests, agricultural pests and invasive. So if we can twist it so that the invasive species happens to be an agricultural pest, such as the coconut rhinoceros beetle, then we can get funding under that program. In the past, we haven't even been able to get funding for little fire ant because USDA didn't consider that an agricultural pest. I think that may be changing, but we'll see.
Speaker?
The contract with the air burner, air curtain burner, how many months or how many years is that supposed to be? We're not buying it, so how long is this contract to run?
We're just going to try and put a deadline of completing this by December the first, because we want to get, this is to try and deal with existing piles.
And you're going to finish, this is going to be from August until December, is, it's going to cost us $350,000 for this?
We don't know if it's going to cost that amount. That's the maximum that it could have, that it could cost us. That's the ceiling. So we have to determine the piles, the size of the piles, how, where these piles are located, all these things will factor into how much we have to pay the companies to do the burns.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if it would be possible, if the committee could request a copy of that RFP, so at least I'd have a better idea of how long and, and exactly what this entails. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Well, there's no further questions, Senator? Sure? Last, last, last call.
I don't have any questions at this time, although, although I don't believe that this discussion is finished. So, and because there are some pieces of information, I believe, that is due back. And so, Mr. Chairman, perhaps, once we get some of that information and really vet out some of the other issues, the corresponding issues, perhaps it would be appropriate to come back. And just to monitor the progress of where we're going, how fast we're really moving, because like I said earlier, you can see there's a very big concern on, on our part, right, of making sure that this whole program moves forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And so just to reiterate then, the, the documents and information that the committee will be expecting is a copy of the budget that, that you are operating on for FY17 and for FY18, as to how you're going to expend the projected invasive species inspection fund. A copy of the procurement document for this air curtain burner that has been sent down to GSA. And of course, you said the organizational chart is in your budget request document, so we'll get that there. And I believe that was actually then the only two, two documents that the committee would be expecting.
Could I ask that you also send to us a description of, of that facility that you described, or the one that's being used in Hawaii? How do they describe that? Do they describe it as a fumigation or an inspection facility? That, that description, please.
I could write something for you, just a few sentences. But basically, it's just a warehouse that you can take maritime containers into and, and offload, do inspections, and if necessary, another room where you could do fumigations.
Okay, but basically the, just a secured warehouse?
A secured warehouse inspection facility, yeah. That, that can handle 40 to 45-foot sea containers inside. And you can close the door, so it's, things can't fly away.
Okay. Senators?
I'm sorry. Just going back to EPA, and maybe of course you, Dr. Campbell, and anybody else would like to. Composting as part of the long-term solution, in discussing that aspect, government versus private? I mean, is there a preference in terms of what we're looking at? You know, government, of course, we would have to start expending government funds to do it. Private, we encourage, you know, do encourage private businesses to enter into that field?
Yeah. Well, the, the long-term goal would be island-wide, so both government and private. The issues that we have now with people that attempt to compost, and I use the word attempt, is because more often, or what we've seen predominantly is people do not do it correctly.
Right.
And so when we get our, our green waste plan together, long-term plan, part of that is the outreach and bringing in professionals that will teach people how to do it correctly. You know, most people think you just put a pile together and let it go. That's, that's incorrect. To do proper composting, it takes a lot of, a lot of work and due diligence on the composter's part to turn and keep stirring the, the compost up so that the bacteria and, and the microbes can, can generate and break down the, the wooded material into, into the soil. So, yeah, that is the long-term and, and again, the hope would be that it's island-wide, so not just government, but also the private sector.
Right. And that seems to make sense. Again, every village, every jurisdiction should have one, and that way it's, it all stays right there. I, I'd be interested in working a lot closer with you on that one as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator, and to the members. Thank you very much for joining us today. With that, I, I want to thank you for, for the time that you've taken to give us the update that we need and also the information that you have provided in preparing for this. And we'll have to get back and take a look at, you know, how we're going to shore up the, the obstacles with respect to revenue collection, how to address the issues down at basically at the ports of entry, and, and I guess, and the hiring of, of the personnel, like you said. personnel. Like you said, we're probably not going to hire the level of expertise that is needed at $40,000 a year. So with that, Mr. Sablon, unless you have any closing comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the department and the remainder of the council members that are here, we thank you for the opportunity. In October is our next Guam invasive species council meeting, we'll make sure you guys are updated on the meeting.
Okay, great.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, then, this oversight hearing is hereby adjourned, and I have 11:25.